It's seven o'clock or six thirty. We call the meeting to adjourn please with the flight.
The United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First on our agenda is the approval of last month's for the planning commission meeting.
I make a motion we accept the meeting, minutes of the last meeting as presented.
All seconded. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any correspondence here? First on our agenda is Julie M. Willow, subdivision planning. Mike, you're here for that?
Yep. Good evening. Mike Sanford here on behalf of the subdivision planning. Those are here as well if you have a question for them. This is basically a one lot subdivision. The Willow's would like to subdivide off their former property and has access to both Hershey Road and Edinburgh. Oh, and there's also a side lot addition. Sorry, I forgot about that. They'd like to subdivide a 60-foot side lot addition onto the property that's on Hershey Road. So it's creating a new lot and then a side lot addition to an existing lot. Sorry about that.
Particular reason why that line off of 99 is not perpendicular?
Yes. When we started looking at how to create this lot, we looked at making the lot parallel to Hershey Road. So we were gonna make the lot parallel. But then we looked at where the Copper Leaf driveway is across Edinburgh Road. And so we moved that property line out so that should this property here have a driveway, it could have a driveway directly opposite of Copper Leaf's driveway. That way they would be directly opposite. So we went just far enough to accommodate a driveway being opposite of Copper Leaf. Didn't want to go all the way perpendicular because then it would take away from their remaining frontage where they live and also it would bring the property line closer to their home. I did provide an aerial image to the zoning department. You guys had that?
There it is.
Yeah. So that there shows the way the property line was rotated, if you will, clockwise to just be beyond the Copper Leaf driveway. Copper Leaf's under construction in this particular image, but we just rotated it just enough so that parcel B, the new lot, could have its driveway opposite of Copper Leaf.
I don't know. Perpendicular, still perpendicular.
Yeah, it says as far as practical. It doesn't require. Some ordinances do say shall. This one doesn't. So it says as far as practical. Like I said, we started off parallel and then we moved it to encompass it. So this is what the Willow's would like to do. And we think it's in compliance with the ordinance because it says as much as practical.
Any other questions from the board? So I'm sorry, what's impeding you from putting that line perpendicular?
Well, if it rotates further clockwise, it would take away from the Willow's' personal home. That's where they live, their farmstead. And that's their horse pasture. They no longer have horses, but that's their horse pasture. And then it would move it into the wet area there as well. So it's for a variety of reasons. Takes away their frontage, moves it closer to their home, puts it in the wet area. And we felt just moving it just enough to accommodate the driveway made sense, kind of. It was good planning for the driveway.
I don't know how many driveways ever line up with property lines.
Well, we wanted the driveway to line up with the driveway across the street. That's why we...
But that has nothing to do with property line? Any other discussion? A call for motion?
I have one question.
Yep.
Mike, in the little area there, just beyond the boundary there, how low is that? I don't have any elevation data.
Yeah, this particular image doesn't have contours on it, but that looks like a wet spot?
Yeah.
I would say that drops another four to five vertical feet. About that much? Yeah, about four to five more feet.
I have a call for motion then?
I'll make a motion we accept the plan as presented.
I'll second it.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda is Frito Lay.
Yep, the next couple of minutes. This is amended land development plan for Frito Lay. They would like to construct a building addition on the westerly side of their building away from Oliver Road. Their existing building and parking's all shown there. They did go to the zoning hearing board and they received a variance because this building addition protrudes into the rear setback. We did put a note on the plan to that effect. And they're arguing, so they'd like to do this building addition on the west side. It's 30 by 55. And then they'd like to relocate their trash compactor, and we did show that there. The zoning hearing board did request that the building addition and the trash compactor be at least 18 feet apart so an emergency vehicle could get between those. So we slid the trash compactor over a little bit so that it met that requirement of zoning hearing board. So no changes to parking per se, just a building addition and relocating of the trash compactor. We did also show the sidewalk along, per engineer Jonas's review, deferred sidewalk along Oliver Road.
And the choir chief with his over.
Kami, did Kip look at this one?
No, I don't think so.
Do you want him to review that?
Not necessarily because he'd be looking more at access and they're not doing anything to change the access. It's gonna pull the water off and the hydrant on Oliver Road and into the site. So...
The relocation that you talked about gives adequate clearance?
Yes, your ordinance, your zoning ordinance requires that emergency access lanes be 18 foot wide. And that's what the zoning hearing board picked up on and requested, and so we complied with that.
Okay, if they had a question, we'd draw it up.
Yeah.
What type of storage is gonna be in this building?
That's actually where they're gonna, where they're like, they have a gentleman that comes to Erie. There's a bunch of Frito Lays, but there's one in Erie. So a gentleman comes here, they have their snack food trucks, and he changes the tire if it needs it, you know, just does very basic maintenance. So that's what this building addition is for, just to do some general service on the Frito Lay trucks. Right now, they're doing it out in Parkamaw, and the guy has no protection from inclement weather. So they're going to, they have a little temporary structure. They're gonna remove that. And they're gonna get this gentleman somewhere to actually respectable to work.
There won't be any fuel stored there?
No.
Other questions? Call for motion?
I'll make a motion to approve as presented.
I'll second the motion.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Thank you. I guess you're three for three there, Mike.
Yeah, right.
Want to take a break or anything, Mike?
No. Delta Sonic would like to amend their land development plan, and so I prepared the plan for them. We surveyed the property. And primarily what they would like to do is change the queuing lanes of how you get into the drive-through. As you pull in, get all queued up and get ready for the drive-through. That's the primary change. There's some secondary changes here. They wanna enhance the canopy. When, if you took your car there to be detailed, you drop it off and they detail it, then they pull it outside the building. Well, they wanted a larger canopy to park it under just to protect it. They did this detail, so they wanna have a larger roofed area to protect it. They have to relocate the dumpsters. So those are really the primary three reasons for the amended land development plan. The township did have a requirement of sidewalks, both along Peak Street and Keystone Drive. And these are not deferred. That's what your ordinance requires. So Delta Sonic will construct sidewalk along all their Peak Street and all their Keystone Drive frontage. And so basically, now you may be asking, why are they redoing the queuing lanes? Because I asked that question because, why would you do that, right? Here's the explanation. They said when they first opened this place, you know, everyone came there for a daily car wash, right? So you got in line, you had to pay the person, decide what you wanted, and then so there was a lot of stacking before you got to the pay station. Now, the majority of their clients have the card where you can get unlimited car washes. So you really don't have to decide what you want. They need more queuing after the pay station than before. So what this change did was it made two lanes after the pay station instead of the one they have now. So it took away from the queuing before the pay station, but it gave more queuing after the pay station. And that's a consequence of people have liked their product, and now they have that card, and they can just go through and they don't have to wait. So that's the primary change. And they've seen this across their other locations.
But it's still a single lane car wash, right? When you're going through and they're, okay.
Still, it's still one lane in, but there is two detail lanes if you drop your car off. But still one tunnel car wash. That's correct. Larger canopy for storing cars afterwards and relocating the dumpsters and the sidewalk.
So the initial garage that you pull through is still gonna be a single lane?
Yes.
Because the double arrows up there confuse me a little bit.
Yeah, I don't know why. There was two on the original plan, and so we put two.
But that just indicates that motion.
Going that direction. Yeah, the car wash goes that way and detail goes the other.
Any other questions?
They're extending the booth that the cashier stands in. Is that correct?
Um, who made me extending?
Well, where the kid collects the money now. It appears on the drawing here that they're increasing the length of that booth.
Uh, increasing it going north?
No.
Oh, width wise? Yeah, it's what they call a sign arch. I still think there's that rapid lane. If you have a card, you just go through.
Well, there's two, there's two rapid lanes. I was just through there Saturday. There's two rapid lanes with the card gates. And then the pay lane is over. And these poor kids have to stand out there and tell me whether there's just one door. And I could see them extending it. It'd give the employees more protection. And it appeared to me that it looked like it was being increased by 20 foot.
Yeah, your pointer's not working. I do know they're redoing the pay station. So yeah, that's, I know that.
And that would help them expedite because that's the longest, because that's where they question everybody and ask them which services. But the people that have the cards just zip right through.
The pay booth is indicated 10 by 20 foot. And calls it a proposed pavement, so I'm assuming this is a new build.
It's new build, yes, correct.
Maybe they're moving it.
I think they're moving it a little north, again, to get more queuing after the pay booth.
Can I call for motion?
I'll motion to approve as presented.
I'll second.
More discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Now the alternate green space for the same property.
What we did is we went out to the property and we looked at all the shrubbery and trees that they have on the property, and we put that on this plan. Of the different, various sites in some of township, this one is very, very well landscaped. They just enhanced it quite a bit recently. So we went out and showed all the trees, all the shrubs on the plan. There are some inside the queuing lane. They're gonna get lost with this reconfiguration. But all the perimeter plantings are there. They're gonna remain. We actually went out when the sidewalk was required, and we moved the sidewalk to try and miss the plantings on the perimeter. So it's just an alternate plan. This just documents really what's out there. There are no proposed plantings because this more than meets the ordinance.
Questions? Call for a motion?
I make a motion we accept the plan as presented.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Yep. Next on our agenda is new realtor, phase three amended land development plan.
Hello. I'm Ken Russell. I'm with CT Consultants. I guess this is the third phase, more or less, of the plan where they're proposing to install two new parking areas and also get rid of one detention pond and enlarge an original detention pond.
So they already paved over the new section in the back?
No, no, no. The new stuff's not paved yet. They're repaving the rest of the, everything else has been repaved that existed.
I see.
No, the new stuff has not been done yet. They may have done the new stuff in the back behind the new addition. That was part of the phase two development. But I'm proposing a whole, another 116 parking spaces for phase three that have not been constructed or nothing. Because it will require new storm sewer and filling in the existing detention pond just north of the Subaru building.
Yes.
We've had discussion before. How about lane?
They're not planning any new light poles for this space.
Well, we need to. They said last time they were gonna come in, they were gonna beam them down, and he said, oh, yes, we will make you happy. Nothing has been done. Nothing. So I think that's a priority for me anyways to have the lighting. If you come down Doran Road, the side road, if you're familiar with the area, Doran Road's a side road butts 19. It looks like a football stadium. And so those lights are really broadcasting well past the property line as the intent. And they said that they were going to steer them down.
Okay.
And they have not been.
I will bring that up to Alan.
So I, that's a contention for me. I don't, I don't see that that has happened. Last time they promised it, and nothing has happened. I'd like to see that. So any comments or more comments?
I agree with you.
Yeah, we all agree. How do you approach it? Do you put a note? Do you have to, or do you take?
I don't know, what thoughts of?
If they're not gonna name parking lights, additional parking lights, then can we put that as a condition?
Because last night, or last time, I think it was, and I don't remember when it was done, but they said that they would definitely...
Well, this was the phase two development with the building.
Okay.
Which we're just technically still working on. So they may eventually do it. I don't know. But I will, at least not a reminder.
Well, the reminder in last time had gone nowhere, and so I, I don't know how we can make them do that without putting a little pressure on them. I mean, I'm all for tabling this until the requirements of phase two are met, that were set and approved by the planning commission. I think that's fair. Because that is a very big need for this community. It was pointed out in the comprehensive planning and everything like that. It was something that the people here wanted. It was said to be done in that phase two. We went on good faith and let that happen, and that never came through. So we just wanna make sure we're doing right. At least, that's why I'm voting that way, that we're doing right by what they asked. So do we motion to table?
Your motion to table, yes.
Then do I have a second on this?
Yep.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And so next on our, is the alternate greenspace. I guess we don't table that also. So I needed a...
I'll make a motion if that be tabled as well.
I'll second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Thank you. Now we have a short real estate subdivision plan.
Oh, Kevin Farr with David Lear Associates. I'll be here representing the owners or with the owners for a short real estate. Basically, they would like to subdivide off the back building from their property that's currently warehousing and the driveway that goes along with that.
Parking address?
Mr. Jonas had a question on the parking. A previous land development plan showed six parking spots along the, I guess that would be the west portion of the existing concrete right there. The property line does cut off about two of those parking spots, but there is room to relocate those, you know, on the property that is the B2 property. So there is enough parking for the current use.
So we need to re-line that or to specify that? Because right now, you're showing it on that second parcel.
Yes, there is room to put the two parking spots that are being cut off in front of the building on their own parcel.
So we need that either redrawn or shown?
Yeah, yes.
Does that take care of things in that?
Yeah, yeah, there's a lot going on here. As was stated. It is busy.
A typical subdivision plan probably wouldn't show all the driveways and everything, you know, it just shows the buildings. But with the driveway being incorporated, going with the building in back, we thought it was best to leave all the pavement and everything on the plan. So that's why it does seem a little busier than a typical subdivision drawing.
Right.
So is there gonna be a right of way or to access from that driveway into?
Well, it would have its own driveway that it does now off of, that's close to that Fossil Creek Road.
I see that.
And then in the back portion, there is a, we did a proposed easement because there is a little bit, there is like a, on the northern building, there is a garage door in back, and sometimes I believe they get deliveries and things back there. So we did do a proposed easement just in case they have to access that back garage door.
So where it says concrete on that coming off of Hershey?
The hashed area is the easement. If you can, if you look up there, the cross hashed area of the plan, that's the access easement. So they'll each have individual accesses, but they'll have that shared area in the back in case, I guess, a truck needs them back up to the garage door to offload or...
But they'll be allowed to use that other driveway? Is that being common?
I believe the intent is to each have their own driveway access.
But it looks like they're also using that other.
They are connected right now, yes.
So as times change with new ownerships within, how does that affect?
I would think with new ownership, they would have the ability to cut off the connection, you know, at any time. They can, I guess.
But it's mutually beneficial for both, at least at this point, to have a shared drive. In the future, we can't tell what's gonna happen.
Well, it's not a shared drive. It's just, once it gets into the property, it's connected. The two driveways are connected.
Okay.
At a point. But if you cut off that connection, they both have their own, you know, driveway access on Hershey Road.
Over by the house?
Yes.
So that really changes the...
The commercial piece actually has three accesses on Hershey Road.
I see. But that middle driveway then complicates, or could, because, okay, I understand. It's not pretty, but it took... Any other discussion? They call for a motion?
Make a motion that we accept the plan as long as the stipulations and the parking corrections are included. Second that.
Okay with that, Matt?
Yep.
Thank you very much.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. Thank you. Next on our agenda is the airport overlay ordinance. Is that...
Do you want to take a stab at it and just correct me when I'm wrong?
Sure.
Okay. So at our last meeting, we went through the entire ordinance and reviewed it. Now we're under the 45-day planning review process. So you are now reviewing as the planning commission and reviewing an ordinance. The fact that we went through it already, I'm not going to read through the ordinance, but just kinda give you what's happening. So this is the first step with planning commission. You're reviewing this ordinance to make sure it meets the planning codes and everything like that.
Can I stop you there a minute?
Sure.
Is it only for Thermal G? So I see that they're specifying.
That is our only airport. So yeah, it's only for that.
But if it would change ownership and change names or whatever, does it stay with that or?
If it runs with the, as long as Thermal G Gliderport remains a public airport, this ordinance will run with it.
So whether it changes name or...
If they became a private airport, it would nullify this ordinance. Because this ordinance is only for public airports, and they're designated as a public airport. So yeah, it's only for Thermal G Gliderport. Now, the next step at the supervisory meeting coming up next week, the supervisors are going to appoint the planning commission as the airport planning agency.
December 20th.
So it'll be by resolution. You'll be appointed as the airport planning agency. At which time, at your next planning commission meeting, we will have a public hearing to review this ordinance.
On December 11th.
And then...
We'll do the advertising for that.
So we'll have a public hearing. I don't see, I don't foresee a lot of, it'll probably just be Mr. Garland showing up for that. But we have to have a public hearing, and then at the supervisory next meeting after that, the final meeting of the year, they will have a public hearing for this ordinance. And barring any major changes or anything, they can approve it at that night, and the ordinance will be taken back. So that's kind of where we're going. So you're gonna see it again next month. And we went through, we made the corrections that we talked about at the last meeting that we had. We corrected the map. We got rid of the typos and everything like that. So if you have any questions regarding this ordinance, otherwise we're looking for a recommendation to, to the supervisors that the ordinance meets our planning.
Can we take just a minute?
Sure.
I don't wanna drag my feet here deliberately. I wanna make sure that the... And as far as the text of the ordinance goes, were any changes made to the definitions? Can you remember them?
No. If I remember, the only change to the text was the section that it was referring, it referred to the wrong section. We corrected that. I believe there was another typo.
Remember where the typo was done?
I think it was just changing that section.
Okay, we changed that section, and then we corrected the colors on the map where it was missing.
And it has been brown stuff of McCain, and you said it until...
McCain is, we've sent a... McCain is, we've sent a copy to McCain, and I think they're under the, they're gonna hang low, see what we adopt, and then maybe steal it and adopt it themselves.
Got it.
But this is more pertinent to us.
Yes.
Because primarily, when you get in McCain, you're going down in the valley, so it would have to be a very tall building before this ordinance would take effect.
So Tim Walker from Knox prepared this report.
Yeah, so it's been reviewed by the attorneys, it's been reviewed by you, so...
Yeah, I just wanted to take one last look at the text, and it looks okay.
Yeah, as far as the definitions, all, most of, if not the entire ordinance, is based off FAA guidelines and guidance, so...
And if Mr. Garland ever did go private, the FAA regulations would still apply to him?
Correct.
Yeah. That was my understanding, too.
Okay. Yeah, this basically memorializes the FAA requirements, and gives us a means that people, as they come in and propose things. And there is a provision in there for the township, under certain circumstances, denying things that would otherwise be in compliance with the ordinance for health, safety, and welfare.
I call for a motion then to accept this as a presentation to the supervisors.
I'll make that motion to forward this regulation to the supervisors to begin the process. I'll second the motion.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Now, this is probably you, Matt, comprehensive plan and implementation update?
We are in the process of applying for two grants. For, one is for Downs Drive, primarily a paving project, but we're kinda reconfiguring the road to make it make more sense. Instead of the four-lane going down to two, it'll be a two-lane with designated turn lanes for the various developments along the way, and that four-lane section then taper down into the two-lane, also including sidewalk connections along the corridor. The other project is Old Zook Road, primarily culvert replacement, the existing culvert's undersized, it's only 18 foot wide on the surface between, between the pulp of the bridge, so barely wide enough to fit two cars through, so we're going to replace that, widen it, so we can get a two-lane road as well as a sidewalk. And then some storm sewer work, paving work to increase the pavement section for the industrial, Matt, your Plastics, in case they ever do a expansion there, move the truck into the back of the property, and get the sidewalk along Zook Road from the township line up to 99. And most of that would probably be a match by Mr. Colerano, because he's deferred that section of sidewalk, the township would put in the sidewalk from the township line to the copper leaf development, then he would be on the line for the copper leaf. So a grant application to do at the end of the month, we're looking at the DCD local share account. We did look at the Penn dot Monta Mondo, but they've kinda given us a cool shoulder, so we gotta try somewhere.
Awesome.
All right, that's all I got.
Next on our agenda? Chris, you're on.
You may move to a German.
Need a second?
I have a second, yeah.
Can I show you my stuff? All in favor?